Call to the special city council meeting for August 28th, 2023. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Kevin Kadada is absent. Tim Rude?
Here.
Cindy Dier?
Here.
And Ms. Muplava?
Here.
Okay, tonight's agenda consists of one item to discuss the city's 2024 budget, the additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion my counsel person here.
Second.
Second my counsel Muplava, leave further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are no minutes. Excuse me, no public hearings, presentation of citizen petitions and comments, comments limited to two minutes. Nothing on the consent agenda. There is no old business, onto new business, discuss the city's 2024 budgets.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is our fifth meeting on the city's preliminary 2024 budget property tax levy. Discussion at this meeting will focus on our enterprise funds, water, sewer, and liquor. And then, like past meetings, also the tax rate, facility needs, and then any short or long-term goals. Starting with the property tax levy, this is the same that has been in each of the, each of the last several budget meeting packets. They are, it is based off of value, valuation increases of seven percent. I do have an email out to the county assessor to get updated information. He's currently out of the office, so when I get that, hopefully for our next meeting, I'll be able to see where we are and adjust the numbers accordingly. It'll generate a little over 101,000 additional dollars in property tax levy. Again, for the houses that we track, a decrease of just under a dollar to an increase of almost $168. Should be noted that that increase of the 167 is on a house that is in excess of $400,000 and does not receive any market value exclusion credits, like other houses proportionate to their value under 400,000. So probably look at selecting some different properties going forward. Keep one of them in that range, so we do know how it is affecting those properties that don't receive any aid. Anticipating just under $400,000 in additional funding for the state, a little over 200,000 one-time public safety aid funding, the remaining is our increase in LGA. As of when this memo was completed last week, there was a current surplus of about 129,000. That does account for about half or 100,000 of that public safety aid being spent in '24. Anyone have any questions on that? Been consistent from the second budget meeting, so. As I said, water, sewer, liquor, our enterprise funds propose to be reviewed at this meeting. And we'll start with liquor, just kind of hit the high notes, the key points, and then our liquor store managers here to follow up, provide any additional comments or answer any questions. For '22, another successful year at Lawnsdale Liquor. We had a gross profit percentage of 22%, operating, non-operating revenue of about 135,000. There was a transfer of a little less than 40,000 to purchase the gator and associated equipment, kind of at the end of, kind of got at the beginning of the season, end of December, beginning of January. Cash provided by operating activities was just over 67,000. Our net change in position was just over 96,000. And then less the transfer, the cash increased by 28,865 to just over 450,000. For '24, revenues, beer, liquor, wine, and other merchandise represent essentially all 99.7% of our revenues. Gross profit percentage and markup are consistent with prior years. In formulating the proposed budget with the liquor store manager, we did talk about trying to increase as much as we could our gross profit percentage on beer, just because that represents almost 60% and 57% of our total sales. So it takes a lot of liquor and wine to increase that gross profit percentage. So they'll be looking at markup on specialty craft beers, things like that. Lottery tickets, we're not selling those any longer. Expenses, expenditures, they're essentially consistent with prior year. Training and education, MMBA conference, Safe-ishure, chamber dinner, alcohol training. Historically, credit card processing fees have been about 2% of our sales. Cost of goods, beer, liquor, and wine, again, based on historical data. Like everything else, the cost of goods have been increasing over the last several years, so proportionate to that, you know, like other business, we've been forced to increase our prices on our goods. Professional services would be services that we contract for, security pest control, Cintas for rugs, IT floor maintenance. Building maintenance, we talked preliminarily on having the inside of the store painted. It's been a number of years since it was painted. I think we've only had it painted once since we moved in. And then also talked about researching options for exterior clean. I don't know if we have ever done that. There is some effervescence on the south side of the building. So just kind of looking at all our options for building maintenance. What are we on, '07, 16, 17 years we've been in business? At least at that location. Dues and subscriptions, Chamber membership, MMBA, which is our Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association, Lawnsdale First, IT, Archive Social. Donations, and that's $2,100 for bathrooms, for in-wash stations, for community days. We just got the invoice for this year, and it was 1,900. Capital equipment, researching and getting quotes on new security cameras. They're the original to the building in '07. They've obviously come a long way in just storage in the cloud versus a DVR. How you can access it via mobile device, your computer, offsite, things like that. Just for a budget number, we plugged 50 grand for that. There's...
21 cameras.
21 cameras, so it's quite a few as far as just cameras and... Transfer, let's see, as of, what's it going to be, July 31st? The liquor fund had a balance of 476,507.39. Just for budgetary purposes, I put 75,000 for transfer. I guess to be determined, I know we've had conversations on pickleball, equipment in public works, and truck, things like that, so.
Can we get an estimate on the pickleball court?
I certainly can.
They're really, they're busy now, I gather, and they're just busy all the time up there. I guess it would be too much trouble.
No.
Maybe like a six, or eight, whatever complex they have.
Yeah, we've actually, next time we have a public works meeting, we'll be requesting WSB to give us proposal for surveying and things like that.
I mean, I'm just kind of curious, is it 50 grand or 200 grand? I mean, I'd say like a ballpark.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Oh yeah, so pickleball court, disc golf, we currently have funding budgeted for that project. And then profits, profit and loss, when including the transfer, the fund balance is proposed to decrease by 134,000. When not including the transfer, proposing to decrease the fund balance by just under 60,000. And really, the main reasons for that are just capital outlay. The security camera, or cameras or system, and just building maintenance. Kind of a quick review. Should you guys have any questions or comments? Obviously, Lynette and I can answer them. As far as the, I did include the 2023 year-to-date revenue and expense comparison for the liquor store. So it actually does have some prior years, actuals, '21 and '22. What was budgeted for this year, the average. And then you can see what each item in the budget is per month. And then that third page in the blue is kind of the stuff that was you'd want to look at, profit and loss, sales, inventory, customer count, all that kind of stuff. I guess the cost per hour to operate the store through the end of July this year was $483 an hour it costs us to operate the store, which is almost 13.23 cents away from last year's cost to operate, so.
Good job, very good. Better than construction.
Well, the next enterprise fund is our water fund. Kind of the revenues are our WAC fees, based on the level of 15 homes so far. Year-to-date, we've issued 14 new single-family homes, six twin-home units. Interest earnings are up substantially overall investments, just with the higher rates of return. Refunds and reimbursements are our insurance dividend and any insurance claim reimbursements that we would receive. Water rates are obviously our number-one revenue source in the water fund. Our rate, or sales have ranged in from 484,000 in 2019 to $700,000 budgeted this year. Actual 2022 was just over 707,000. Just given kind of the previous comment, or item in the staff report is operating year. So all those relate to the operating revenue, operating income, change in net position, and then the increase or decrease in cash. So you can see our operating revenues have increased from 504.670 to 722.645. And as our revenues have increased, our operating deficit has reduced from almost 200,000 to just under 10,000 last year. Then you can see the net change in position ranges from a deficit of almost 34,000 to in 2021, increase of 134,000. And then cash, you can see that decreasing from 114,000 last year to an increase of 106,000 in '21. Staff is recommending that water rates be increased in '24. We currently have about 1,700 units that we build between residential and kind of commercial, institutional. Average uses is around 7,000 gallons per month. So that's what these estimated revenue increases are in projected monthly and annual increases are based off of. So the last time rates were increased was 2018. We increased the per-thousand-gallon rates. 2020, we increased the base fee by a dollar, and then rates of 25 cents per thousand gallons. And then '21, we increased the base fee by $2. And then the per-thousand-gallon rate varied in each of the four bands that we have. So based off of the 1,700 customers, for every dollar increase in the base fee, it generates about $20,000. And then for every 25 cent increase in the per-thousand-gallon rate, just under $36,000 is estimated to be generated. Again, that's on an average bill of 7,000 gallons per month. Recommendation is to increase the base fee by $2 from $14 per month to 16. And then the per-thousand-gallon fee be increased by 50 cents for each per-thousand-gallon tier. As proposed, it would generate an estimated 112,000. The average monthly bill would increase by 550 per month, or $66 for the year. And then if residents use 3,000 gallons, they're not high users, or less, the increase will not be more than 275 per month, or $33 per year. And then if they do, and if a customer does use more than 7,000 gallons per month, it would just be 50 cents for every $1,000 over the 7,000 gallons. I did include, we updated every, at the beginning of every year, our water and sewer rate comparison of surrounding communities. And even with our, the rate increase as proposed, our water rates would still be less than the surrounding communities, Eco New Market, New Prague, and Montgomery.
Well, you think this should be in so dry, the water usage would be as high as ever, you'd expect. Do you know what year-to-date is?
Yeah, if I projected it out for the rest of the year, not including August, it's not even 700,000 dollars in revenue.
Really? You would have thought that this year would be...
Mm-hmm.
Well, we had a really wet spring.
Yeah, so I don't know if we didn't have to water too much in June, and now we're kind of catching up with us. But I would anticipate that August is a high revenue company.
Do we have a lot of delinquent accounts currently?
No, we shouldn't. There shouldn't be anything out there more than just the past due amount, 60 days past due or 90 days past due.
Okay. Seems like when the bills start getting really high, then they don't pay. It just, you know, compounds itself, but if they're, we're not selling a lot of water currently. If it's not an issue.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure if all the courts have noticed it on their monthly pumping reports or...
We really started picking up in July. And in contact with the DNR, it's not that they shut us down. Because we were literally like .27 miles out of the, away from the border for the watering ban.
Okay.
However, all that information is online, and I just think over the years of water conservation, things that we do at the school, and it just, water at night, water in the morning, be more efficient, you know? Unfortunately, it cuts into our water sales. And then just to touch on the delinquent accounts, from what I noticed, and you know, Tammy can probably elaborate on this, it's the same people every time, so.
We actually, as we were today talking about staffing at City Hall, I had staff, because that was one of the things too, you know? Do we shut people's water off? Do we just assess it? You know, what should we be doing? The practice has been, you know, you consume the good, the service, so you can pay. And we're not going to assess it. We had issues with, you know, some bills falling through the cracks, and some rentals, and you know, ownership changes, things like that, that should have been caught in closings. So to Joel's point, over 83% over the last six months, 83% of the people provided shut-off notices have been provided at least two in the last six months. So it really is typically the same people.
Is it 10% penalty?
It is 10%, correct. It's seven, eight hours per month between office staff and public works doing the door hangers, which, you know, in the whole scheme of things is two, two-and-a-half weeks worth of work.
And what do you charge to shut them off and turn them on?
To turn them on?
$75.
Each way?
No, just to turn them on. You know, and...
They turned off any recently?
We should have turned off some today.
Three today.
Three today?
Yeah.
I assume they're going to pay tomorrow, don't expect...
Maybe. They typically come in within a week.
Is that fee something we should be, does that need to be addressed? I mean, people, it almost like it doesn't matter, you know, 75 bucks, they don't care. If it needs to be $100, I mean, we have staff time to go out there. First, they got a hang-up thing, then they have to go and wrench it.
I think on a typical month, paying anywhere from 30 to 40 notices on people's doors. Just talking with Brittany today about it, there was one lady that she's gotten them in the past, and you know, her complaint was she didn't get her notice. Well, it's still there, it's still...
It's not our job to notify.
Right. But with that said, of those between 30 and 40, she had a comment to me today that there's a dozen or so that think she just waits for the van to pull up into their yard, and then it's, "No, no, I'll call, I'll pay it right now." And I can see both sides of it. It's in the winter, the notices are great, just for the fact of locating the curb stop. Sometimes there's a mountain of snow there, property damage, we open all kinds of cans of worms.
Sure.
Do you think many of it is a hardship?
I think we've had some in the past, I don't know of any personal ones right now.
There probably are, but it's so hard to know how people are doing financially and...
I remember during COVID, wasn't there a thing where we weren't allowed to shut people's water off? Because it was deemed the house wasn't habitable, and then, do you remember that?
Uh, yeah, I believe we...
Or did we just do that internally?
No, that was a state ruling, but...
It was all utilities, I think, right?
But did that ever get, I mean, was that ever changed? Or was that just simply just a COVID-only thing? Because the Attorney General said, if you're turning that off, you, we are effectively making that house not habitable. Because we have to have that for a certificate of occupancy, right? For somebody to move into the house, they have to have water turned on?
Water service, yeah.
Yeah, so we...
That did sunset.
It did, okay, all right. I just didn't want to find out that, you know, we started doing this again, we shouldn't have been.
And there's, since COVID, there's so many financial options or assistance programs out there. And then we were providing all that information, and we reformatted our shut-off notice with links and contacts for aid.
I just didn't want to...
And we do have quite a few people that are utilizing those funding options.
Do you feel $75 comes as your time to turn them on?
On an average, I would say it does. There are some that are more.
I mean, I think that's the point of the fees, you want to be fair. You know, I don't think we want to be punitive necessarily, even though, you know, ideally you'd like to be. It really should just be fair about costs. So if you think 75 is a fair number, it's pretty hard to...
It could be 50 bucks, it could be 100 bucks, just the snide comments you get.
That's...
You know, people are parking their vehicles over curb stops, they are...
Do they, really?
Oh, we...
So why do you do that?
We're doing, nothing. No, we contacted the attorney, we can't, there's nothing we can do.
Aren't they parking in the driveway?
There's one that is in the driveway.
Oh, okay.
Or if they got a project going on, it's amazing that all the landscaping block are right on top of the curb stop.
Do you think it's their revenge at the city for other issues? Just antagonize the...
I don't know about other issues, but yeah, not getting their water shut off. You know, some cities, just because of how uncomfortable or awkward or hostile the situation can be, they've just, no conflict, and we're just assessing. We're not even spending the time.
But the trouble with assessing, when do you get paid? You know, if they don't pay their taxes?
Yeah, it would eventually...
You know, seven years or whatever.
Right.
I guess it's whatever you recommend. I mean, ideally, you'd like to shut off the water and get paid right away, but if you think it's a safety issue or something like that.
I don't feel it's a safety issue. I think my fear with assessing it is that it's going to be just a, more of a freebie mentality of these 30, 40 people.
Exactly.
And I think all in all, you know, it's, you know, I've done it, Scott primarily does it. There's no hostile situations. It's mostly from my experience, whatever excuse they can pull out, "Oh, I forgot," oh this, oh that. Well, you know, we know how long it's been.
So when we shut off, how many months behind are they?
Two.
Okay. So we're not letting it get so far down the road that the bill becomes unmanageable? And we offer a payment plan also, right?
Correct. But there's still a, there's still a 10%, there's still a fee associated with this.
Right, right.
We prefer not to, because then that just becomes the, that's the out then. "Oh, let's do a payment plan," I mean, they don't comply with it.
Right, that's right, the new collections. I would leave it...
I think there's some, there's legwork in this system, but all in all, I would say it's working.
Okay.
I mean, like three of 1,700 today, I don't know what the typical water shut-off rate is in Montgomery or Bloomington per se, but...
It's pretty minimal.
I think it is.
And so back to the rates here, so basically what you're proposing, Joel, is to cover the net loss for '22? Is that kind of what you're basing your budget on?
Yes. And just kind of what's acceptable and, you know, to the council and in the public?
As we all know, water rates are a sore subject. For some reason, they always have been, and I don't know.
When you look at it, it's one of the cheapest things you can buy. But yeah, that is, at least that's my recommendation.
I'd say at a minimum, you got to raise it half, a buck and a quarter per gallon, but... The whole load would be over $16 a month, plus the per gallon. So that'd be over 20 bucks a month.
Uh, it will...
It would be a pretty hefty...
Oh, I got it here. It went from 41... What was it, the old rate? It's going from, I believe, 41.25 to 46.75?
Well, must have gone, your base rate is going from 14 to just $2, that one?
$2 a month, yeah. And then 50 cents per thousand gallons. So if you're at the 7,000, that'd be $3.50, and then a 2.
Right, so you're 46.
So...
It's one cup of coffee.
Yeah, not even.
Depends where you're buying it.
The car wire is coming here. 500 calories and eight bucks.
I think you got to raise it, it's just a matter of how much we want to, how much we want to go. What, maybe we should talk about the sewer first, are you thinking about doing something with that?
I am not recommending any, with that sewer not being paid off, not recommending an increase in sewer rates.
Okay, so back to water. When was the last time we raised? Okay, so back to water. When was the last time we raised water rates then?
Twenty-one, I believe.
Am I missing here somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, right there, right there, okay.
Yeah, eighteen, twenty and twenty-one. You know, I think twenty-one was in response to COVID and everything skyrocketing, uh, you know, not much is.
Nothing got less.
I was gonna say, so you have, I mean, your revenues are pretty close and when you're twenty-one, you have a hundred and six thousand profit. Twenty-two, you have a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar loss. So your, so your expenditures must be.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Highly higher, I mean, why would that?
Such a swing.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to, um, look at, at prior years and.
I, I'm just kinda curious why they're such a swing, you know, is it because of COVID or what? But, I mean, the revenue was about basically insane. But you have over two hundred dollar swing. I mean, expenses must be up to two hundred grand last year. If I'm reading that right.
Yeah, well, like, you know, one example here is the auditor does a journal entry for, you know, a pension expense. Well, one year it was, you know, a hundred and twenty-two dollars and next year it's a hundred and two thousand. So, I mean, there's a hundred thousand dollars.
Why, for a pension expense?
Repairs and, you know, repairs and maintenance, um, just accruals for, um, compliance with GASP and things like that.
But that's just, that's an accounting thing though, right?
Correct.
I, I mean, you see, you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
You know, I just don't know why.
So is this a true number or is this a shuffled around number for what?
No, they're straight out of the audit. I pulled them consistently through, out of the audit.
Yeah, I, I think what's exactly, is there a change in, like, you know, accounting practices or why? I mean, that's, you know, you have a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar swing, right, if I'm reading that right? From a hundred and six profit in twenty-one to a hundred and fourteen loss. Why would you have such a huge swing when the revenue was basically the same?
Yeah, I'd have to go through the line items and, and see where the, the big differences were.
I guess if we could just check that, I mean, I mean, obviously we gotta raise it to, to cover the cost, but, I mean, that just seems pretty. Seems a lot, you know?
You know, here's, you know, twenty-five thousand swing in repairs and maintenance. You know, so it, there, it's kind of all over the board. Electric utilities are, are increasing substantially, depreciation.
You gotta get to two hundred and twenty thousand.
Capital outlay equipment.
I mean, it is, is what it is, I'm just kinda curious why it's such a huge. Do we have to decide this tonight or this is part of the process to, to the whole budget? Would you like it decided?
Well, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to, cause everything's gonna be based off of. Revenues and, and expenses. But, I mean, they're not gonna go into effect until, you know, after we adopt our fee schedule, you know, be effective one-on-one.
I mean, generally speaking, do you want the water at a break-even point or do you wanna try to prove income or?
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to generate a, a nominal profit just to, you know, help pay for. Debt service on, you know, water main on our upcoming twenty-four project, you know, not, not all that, you know, the. And I haven't looked in the, I haven't read the feasibility report on next year's project or meeting later this Wednesday, I think. Um, to know what the, the water portion of that, that project is. You know, but I don't, I don't think a couple hundred thousand in each project is, is online for, you know, removal and replacement of water mains, services, hydrants.
I, I mean, that's cause assessments are short, generally speaking.
Correct. You know, a booster station is, you know, we're. Did our comp water plan and they're saying twenty-four is booster replacement, so that's included as an expense. After we get them talking revenues, I think we're four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that.
Does giving a project have anything to do with this?
Um, some, but.
Just trying to remember back. I mean, I, you know, I assumed during COVID, there was a lot more water and I would've just thought your revenue sort of been. Either higher in twenty-one or lower in twenty-two if it gets back.
And it just. This isn't casting a, a broad brush, but people just don't care about their yard as much as they once used to. From, from, from what I've seen lately.
Well, I mean, obviously you can't be in the red, so I guess we're gonna have to come up with something. Well, it's inside at the next meeting.
Yeah.
In Kemington Park, but, I mean, I, I think you gotta assume you're gonna at least do the, the first increase, it's just a matter of if you wanna go to the whole load and.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say my recommendation would be the, the base fee and the per thousand gallon rates. So the hundred and twelve increase would be, my recommendation would be the minimal increase. Or the minimal, excuse me, increase.
Right, the two dollars and the fifty cents per thousand.
Uh, the two dollar increase in the base fee, which everyone pays.
Right, and then the fifty cents on per thousand gallons.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if you're a conserver, then you're gonna pay less. Such a double-edged sword. We sell water, but we want you to conserve.
Right. Unless you wanna, you strongly have an opinion.
No, actually still, that's still that negative hundred and fourteen, it's like.
Right.
I kinda scratch my head at that, but.
Right, well, maybe take a quick peek at that in the next budget meeting, give you a final one, just to be, I'm sure at a minimum would be the dollar.
Well, expenses. Training and education, uh, Safe-ishure, and then continuing education for water cer- certi- certificates. Chemicals would be the treatment plant and, and grounds. Repairs and maintenance, thirty-five thousand dollars general, twenty thousand water main breaks and. Uh, two thousand for hydrant powder coating, which seems to be working out pretty well, I think.
They look really good.
Yeah. Professional services, again, they're similar, um, to other, other departments, copy of uniforms, RPZ testing. Some of these are specific to water, but basically, you know, services that we pay for, go-for-one flow meter testing. Engineering is general. Dues and subscriptions would be our, uh, annual support for civic systems. Uh, census for, um, meter reading, uh, real water, membership and, um, SCADA license. Capital outlay is fifty percent of new and replacement water meters. Uh, we are proposing a, uh, purchasing a new gun for, um, meter reading. Four hundred and sixty thousand for booster station replacement. Um, that provides the pressure to the upper northwest section of Lonsdale, um, due to the area's elevation relative to our water tower. Uh, installed in the seventies and based off of the recent, uh, twenty-two comprehensive water plan. Is, um, proposed to be replaced again in, in, in twenty-four. The cost does include, um, the project cost and associated fees, engineering, things like that. And we are proposing to use reserves to fund the project, uh, and then as of, what, July thirty-first. Fund balance in the water was two point one six million. Uh, other i- items identified in the comp water plan for completion in twenty-four was a, a water tower. Sightseeing and storage study, utility rate study. Just, you know, given the, the booster station, we're just recommending that, and that be done in twenty-four. And then those other items. Be postponed, but, but not too late, so. You know, we're, we're anticipating and, and planning for our, our next water tower or whatever. Whatever that is, if it's one large one, two standalone, um, that's what, what that would, or what would determine that. Uh, and then. Another item that would be, um, nice to have would be some type of bulk water reporting system. Um, right now, there's, there's nothing. So I think staff has, um, met with, uh, company that would provide a system. That would be able to be accessible after hours by multiple contractors, um, and really. Increase the accountability as to how much water is actually being sold.
So for bulk water, you're talking with, for construction time factors?
Yes, we actually had that scenario happen today. Um, typically, if somebody asks for water after hours, we have a valve on the outside of the building. In the past, that's been damaged, you know, they forget to unhook their hose and drive away, when the water's just on. Um, someone has to come in, but today, just actually, there was a scenario where there's. Two contractors that wanted water after hours, which is fine. I don't know how many loads each one is getting.
Is it a meter?
In our shop it is. It's not a, this, this system would allow prepaid cards, credit cards. Or change, um, and it's just a, similar to like a car wash on the outside of our shop. You pay, and you hook up your hose and you get that much water. We have. I just gave Tammy the bulk water last week and there was two or three sheets where. You know, these guys are in and out of our shop, if somebody's in the shop, it's, it's just kind of a.
So they, what's, what's the contractor just writing it down?
Yeah.
So it's an honor system?
It is.
Okay.
And there was, you know, the first sheet we presented, there's three entries where they didn't write down the end meter reading. I just had to explain it today, this, this contractor didn't understand why the end reading was important. So, well. That's just how much you fill and how much you use, you know?
So this paint system would, would determine the amount of usage immediately?
It, and it would only allow for that much water for what you paid for to be pumped. So if you had a five hundred gallon tank in the back of your truck, it'll tell you you owe thirty-five bucks or whatever it is.
Right, right. I mean, that makes sense, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think what other cities.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to, I guess, do a little bit more research, cause just the way that our fees are, it's, you know, you were talking, it's kinda set up for a, a season.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be okay with, with the more detailed.
A base fee plus X amount per thousand gallons.
I mean, it probably is good to have a detailed meter system or something to, you know? Like you say, usually the, the truck drivers, they don't think that they don't care or whatever, they just get the water, pull it back to the job site, you know?
You know, I did, I did look into, so the meter that's in our shop does not have. Radio capability or capability to, to be wired for, they have like an odometer type of thing that we could put on the outside of our shop in some sort of cabinet. Well, that would require a new meter, which is, for our shop is thirty-five hundred dollars and we're still on the honor system then.
So this way you would alleviate that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd, I'd agree with that.
This one I looked into, um.
Do they?
It's, they would have the option to come into city hall and get a prepaid card, they could use their home debit card or cash.
Is it just for city projects or county projects or is there a criteria?
Anybody's allowed to get water.
What have you experienced, just city or have you used other county roads? I suppose I.
The state, I mean, yeah, all, it's, it's a pretty, this has been a pretty busy summer for wa- bulk water, actually. You know, it's always, um, every reconstruct about this time when the sod gets laid or something like that, then they're.
Right.
But, you know, the state did the. Seal coating on Highway nineteen and then we had the county road four project here, jetting project every year.
Right.
Um, Common Grounds is a big one that uses a lot. He kind of outsmarted us by buying a big semi instead of paying for each load, but.
I would agree with that, I, I think they should be researched.
Yeah.
Because you do have to, these numbers all have to be reported anyway into your water reports, correct?
They do. We're, we're safe on that aspect because the water is all metered.
Okay.
It's the revenue aspects that we're lacking.
I mean, wouldn't it be basically the same as a gas pump?
Yes. Yep.
Otherwise, that's who's responsible for it between beginning and end.
Yeah.
If you just suddenly plug, plug the credit card in there, it's, you know, we don't care, we'll get paid, right?
Yep.
Right, I think you should research that, it's good idea.
And then the last, uh, few line items in, in the water are just debt service principal interest and, and transfers for, for debt service projects, so.
How did, do you factor the interest income on that two million dollars? Well, how do you handle that?
Kinda looking at, at prior months and.
I mean, do, do you include it in the operating costs or not?
Does that just, uh? Uh, yes. Anyone have any questions or?
Comments, concerns? I think it's good, and I think, yeah, obviously we gotta, gotta at least break even, that's for sure, you know?
Uh, the last department tonight, sewer, again, revenues are very similar, plumbing connections are sack, um, are, um, based off of the. The size of the service line coming to a, a property, it was based off of fifteen new homes. Um, you're just talking about interest earnings are, are higher due to higher investment rates. Uh, refunds and reimbursements are insurance claims, and sewer sales are based on historical and twenty-three year to date. And then late fees for both water and sewer represented about, or equal about two and a half percent of, of sales. You know, training, education, same thing, um, Safe-ishure, PCA continuing education, chemicals, uh, wastewater treatment plant. And we are accounting for, uh, an increase to account for switching from ferric chloride to ferric sulfate. Um, this will be associated with our chloride reduction variance that we're working with the pollution control agency on. And then, um, we accounted for funds to purchase bugs to reduce the grease foam in the aerated pond. Which would be west of the treatment plant. So staff has been trying to figure out why there's so much foam and they've determined that it's coming from grease. So there are bugs, there are chemical bugs out there that we can purchase, I think, on a monthly basis?
Yeah, I actually just met with that guy today, he came back down, um, looking at historical data. We have two ponds up there, aerated ponds, and we switched to one of them in like two thousand nine. Back in tho- back at that time, our average daily flow was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand gallons per day. We're up to three hundred and thirty-seven. Our treatment plant is designed to treat six hundred and eighty-seven thousand per day. So shutting one pond down, we're running at half capacity, which, that's what we're, we're just running at, so we shut one down, that's fine. We were able to handle that load much better. Now that we are actually at half capacity, we're experiencing a lot more loading with just the one pond. These bugs would help us eat these fats, oils, and greases, and eat up some of the solids in all aspects of the treatment plant. We're hopeful that it will reduce hauling costs. The alternative, you know, with the more flow, more flow coming in, is really to open that other pond backup, which we're talking hundreds of thousands to to do something like that. Meeting with Jordan and a few vendors that have this, they're very confident that this is a temporary solution, you know, once we get to six hundred thousand gallons a day, we we just have to open the other pond, but.
Right, right.
Uh, professional services are, include bio solids, the hauling and applying, um, and then accounting for the payment to the owner if needed, uh, May first to May fifteen. Sewer jetting, televising, and then just fees associated with it, P S N, um, bank fees, CINTAS, things like that. Uh, engineering, uh, three thousand general, eight thousand data link. Electrical has been increasing over the last last several years. Um, dues and subscriptions would be civic systems and census, annual support. And then, um, as with the water fund, uh, debt service would be the the principal and interest payments associated with any sewer portions of a street recon. I guess the first time in twenty years, twenty twenty-four, there won't be a P F A loan payment on the treatment plant, so we made our or wired our last payment, not even knowing it was due the twenty-first, so early last week, we did. And then, you know, the rest of the information in the staff report is just just from prior years, or I'm sorry, prior meetings. Um, the capital improvement plan, and then short, long-term goals and and facility needs, so. Not sure if you guys have any questions about what we went over tonight?
Just thinking back when that water waste water plant was constructed, it was such a fiasco, we had contacted default, and, you know, we had attorneys involved.
That was one of the first things when I got here, the New Met case.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Jesus.
Wasn't like a million-dollar heir in there? Bid or something like that, then to include something, or?
It was one of the, I think, something that bid bond, barely paid the attorney fees, so all that was exercise. So the real question for tonight that we'll have to consider is the amount of increase for the water rates.
Correct.
And an estimate for the pick-up mall costs.
Absolutely.
Unless the council has any questions or anything else, I guess that would conclude staff report.
Got anything? Okay. So moved. Motion my councilperson here.
Second.
For the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion Karen, this meeting adjourned.